Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Village of Merrick Board of Trustees meeting for March 28th. I apologize for the tardiness. The executive session ran over. Sometimes these situations cannot be avoided. But the business of the government proceeds. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Under God. Justice for all.
Very nice use of the phrase. Good evening. The first item on the agenda is to open the meeting. No, actually, the first item on my agenda is to close the work session. I need a motion to close the work session. You made the motion. May I have a second, please? Can somebody second Nora? Nora, you're muted, right? She can't unmute. What's going on here?
There you go.
Hi, yes, a second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Sally Corwell.
Trustees Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Not here.
Here yet. I don't think he's on yet.
And Mayor Murphy.
Aye. Next, first item on the agenda is a presentation by the young men and women from Merrick High School, Okra students on this summer project. Okay, and who is gonna lead this parade tonight?
I'll lead the presentation.
Right?
Alright, is it fine if I share my screen?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I, yes, I am Luca Jobio. I am a junior here at Merrick High School.
I'm Griffin McIntyre. I'm also junior at Merrick High School.
And my name is Eli Tanamal, and I'm also a junior at Merrick High School.
We are all students in the Okra program at the high school, and we're here to present to you our summer slide prevention initiative. If you guys have any questions, please hold them until the end. We'll have time at the end to ask questions. So we are here today seeking your approval to use a section of the Pitt Memorial Park near Merrick Avenue School as a site for our initiative. Our goal is to ensure that you are all well informed on the progress of our initiative as we roll it out in the coming months.
I'm sure you're all familiar with Okra, but just to go over it, Okra stands for Original Civic Research in Action. It provides students with the opportunity to research local issues in the community, where they then narrow down their research to one issue and then implement a creative solution or preventive method for it, and then collect data on it to measure the effectiveness.
So as a group, we started by researching an education inequality within our community, and we pinpointed what is called the summer slide as one of the most prominent causes of the education inequality. And we also were able to connect a lack of book access to literary skills development issues. So pretty much, if there is a lack of access to books, students were having a more difficult time developing their literacy skills.
The summer slide is a term for the loss of knowledge that student experience of the summer. Students of low socioeconomic status are more susceptible to the summer slide because they're not, they're often do not have access to enriching activities and materials over the summer, including the steady access to books that they had during the school year. Over time, the greater losses for these students accumulate, and as shown in the graph, the gap between them and the students with higher socioeconomic background grows very large.
Now, we're gonna take you through, you know, the lack of access of books and how that's a main issue, a big issue in the community. The students in the Village of Merrick have great access to books through the Merrick Public Library and to the school district, but research suggests that book ownership is an important factor in the literacy development among students.
Yeah, so we came across a few studies from this book, No More Summer Reading Loss, showing essentially that reading achievement in students directly correlates with the amount of books available in the home. They also found that more affluent households had two to three times more books in the home, which explains the gap in reading skills between the children of low and high socioeconomic status. This research proves why our initiative, which is focused on providing books for students with a low socioeconomic sex to keep in their homes, will have a strong impact on the reading skills of those students.
So this book Desert Map from Unite for Literacy is color-coded by area to show the percentage of homes that own over 100 books. The dark green being the area with the highest percentage of homes that own more than 100 books, and the more reddish colors are the areas with the least number of homes owning over 100 books. So these images show the percentages in certain areas of our own community. Here in the image on the left, you can see that we circled the proposed location for our initiative, and that resides in a more orange or reddish area, while the areas around it remain a prominent green. This data clearly shows that this specific area of the community would benefit most from our initiative.
In both the Village of Larchmont and the Village of Merrick, there aren't many options in regards to purchasing books in person. Larchmont is fortunate enough to have Anderson's Bookstore, which is stocked with children's books, both in English and in Spanish. However, in the Village of Merrick, the only place to purchase books is the CBS Merrick Avenue, which is a location that has been closed due to flooding from the damage from Hurricane Ida. While purchasing books online is an option, many families of lower socioeconomic status have a more difficult time ordering books online due to factors such as a lack of a credit card and the lack of a steady mailing address. The public libraries do offer an expansive collection of books. However, the research shows that the most effective way in curbing the summer slide is to increase the number of books in the home.
Now, we will be briefly describe the existing efforts being made to prevent this issue. The Merrick School System already have very strong efforts to curb the effects of the slide for its students. Their main initiative is their book giveaway program, which hands out a number of books to students who qualify for free and reduced lunch at the beginning of the summer. This giveaway happens only once throughout the summer. And other efforts associated with our schools include the Co-op Camp run in the summer and the Dos Cominos program.
And now, we're gonna take you through our plan and how it specifically helps students affected by the summer slide and works complementary to programs run by the district. As a group, we are going to construct a freestanding book depot at the Pitt Memorial Park that will be in use for the summer months. Depot is located in the heart of the community, and proximity helps increase access and engagement with the depot. We will provide a constant stream of books to students living in the area with a strong emphasis on third through fifth graders, as they are the, they are the age that is most affected by the summer slide. During the summer, we will run weekly book talks with students in the community to increase engagement with the book depot. And we are also working closely with Merrick Avenue School to promote our initiative, increase engagement among students, and build a community ownership over the depot. We are working closely with the administration of Merrick Avenue School to ensure that the kids develop this sense of ownership that is so key to making this a success. We are planning for the students to participate in a design contest, where the final design and themed depot will be chosen by the students. We are also working with the MAS administration to publicize both the kickoff event and the book club meetings through existing messaging systems in use by the school.
We chose this location shown in the image for its nice seating area, proximity to Merrick Avenue School, and location with the community. We initially considered placing it on MAS property, but decided on a public park near it because we wanted it to feel like a part of the community and to have the students and community members take ownership of it. And we really want the students to view it as a fun community activity and spot rather than just associate it with school. Here is a 3D model we designed and what it would potentially look like in the proposed location. This is a basic model for now, as we do have plans for the students to participate in a design contest and help decorate it themselves.
All maintenance such as refurbishments or refilling of books will be done by us. Because this initiative takes place during the summertime, we have extra free time to be consistently maintaining the depot. After the summer is ended, we will examine its success and decide whether or not we want to continue our initiative in the future. And if so, we would search for organizations or groups within Merrick High School that would be able to maintain it. And listed here are the funds we have graciously received to pay for both the cost of books and the structure itself. We would like to thank the Merrick Schools Foundation, Ms. Ward, and the district for funding the creation of our book depot. And then here is a list of the community members we have worked with to get to this point. We are extremely grateful for all the help they've provided us with, and we will continue to be working with them in the future.
Thank you all for your time. Right now is the moment to ask any questions if you guys have any.
I think that this is just an absolutely great initiative, and hopefully it'll help stem the slide. I know that is one of the main goals of the Co-op Camp. And this works nicely in tandem. You know, just also, one thing I wanted to point out, that the library does sell books to. Downstairs in the basement, they have a room where they sell books. But I think part of the problem might be families not having a disposable income to devote to books. And you know, that's a shame, and that's why this is so important. And I thank you gentlemen so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for the young men?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna need photographs for the newsletter when they get it built and put it up.
Can you gentlemen do that too? Yeah, we will definitely do that.
Yeah, we'll definitely take photos and make sure they get to you for the newsletter.
Thanks, Luca. Thanks.
Take photos with yourselves next to it. Suitable for your college applications.
Exactly right.
And is there, is there anything that the village could do to assist you all?
So we've been, we've been meeting with and corresponding with Mr. On, which is the foreman of the Parks Village of Merrick, and we've discussed different ways of implementing it. You know, we were kind of pitching this idea to him of putting these poles in the ground, maybe like metal poles in the ground, because this is going to be in place during the summer. It'd be easy if we could have something that we could almost just place it onto and then, you know, lock it into for the summer. And then at the end of the summer, lift it back out of it, and next summer, it'll be easy to put it back into the ground because the poles are still, will still be in ground.
Yeah.
And it would also be, make it a lot easier if there was any incoming weather, like a hurricane or something, that would really damage the structure, that we could take it out easily and put it in like one of our garages or something to keep it safe.
Well, Eli, I hope nobody never comes to that. I appreciate you thinking about it, and if anybody could come up with a solution, and how to best mount this, it is Mr. On. But thank you, gentlemen. Good luck in the future.
Thank you.
I always say, the Merrick's chief export is smart children. Go out and make us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, we have a presentation of a payroll audit by the Bonadillo Group. And Mr. Doyle will be presenting, or is it?
Adam. Adam will be presenting.
Hey, Adam, how are you?
Good, good. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, my name's Adam Cazelli from the Bonadillo Group. I was the manager on this project. Tim Doyle, the partner, he's also on the call as well. Thank you for having us this evening, and I'm just gonna briefly walk through the presentation which was sent out earlier. So the village engaged us to do a review of your payroll activities for 2018, 2019, and 2020. The objective of this review was, one, to make sure that all employees are being paid at the appropriate rate. Two, that the overtime that is being earned is being paid at the appropriate rate, is being appropriately approved, and the supporting documentation to support those hours is being retained. And the third area we looked into was the village's healthcare plan, and you know, for employees that opted into the healthcare plan to make sure the amount that's being deducted from their, from their pay each week is, or each pay period is appropriate. And also, on the other hand, for people who opted out of the healthcare plan, that they're receiving the appropriate stipends and the appropriate amount. So as part of this review, we requested the collective bargaining agreements that are in place, payroll registers for the time period, time sheets related to overtime, payroll authorizations, authorizations of employee healthcare contributions, and open enrollment authorizations for all employees that have opted out of the health insurance benefit. Okay, so for the results of our review, so for the review of the salaries, we were able to confirm that all individuals in the village were being paid the, you know, their appropriate rate for the years that we reviewed in 2018, 2019, 2020. The one area to bring up is, it wasn't always necessarily clear which step some of the union employees were on. You know, it's easy to figure out for some employees, you know, if they, they've been there for four years, they're on step four. But for some employees, when they start, they start on a step other than one, and we didn't necessarily have the, you know, the documentation to support, you know, which step all of the individuals are supposed to be on. However, working with HR and with Maria Danielle, we were able to resolve all those issues and determine, I guess, all individuals, full-time individuals, were being paid the appropriate amounts. Now, on the part-time employees, we were not able to verify that the rates that they were getting paid was approved, or, you know, there was no documentation to show an approved rate. In general, they were reasonable. However, the part-time salaries are approved as a total budget amount and not necessarily as, okay, this crossing guard is gonna make this amount per hour and things like that. So one of the recommendations you'll see we have there is that this, the list of all part-time employees and what their appropriate rates is maintained, and, you know, all changes are, to the rates or increases are documented and approved. So there's a paper trail to show what the proper part-time employee rate should be. We're also gonna recommend that the village develop an HR filing system to have all the necessary information readily available related to individual salaries. Like I said earlier, the, you know, it wasn't always readily available to determine which step an individual is on. So we're recommending that, you know, a sheet or file is maintained showing, you know, how much each individual is making, what their step they're on, you know, showing approvals of salary increases and everything like that. Now, I know from speaking to Danielle and Maria that they've started this process. You know, since our audit began, they've been building up on this process, so it's something that's moving forward. There is that.
Adam, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
So in the most recent negotiated contract with the CSEA Union, we eliminated the step guide. So individuals start at a starting salary, and then they just get incremental increases based on whatever percentage is negotiated. So going forward, this process, that issue will be eliminated.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, and thanks for letting me know.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments before I move into the next two areas? Okay, so the next area of our review was overtime, where we viewed all of the overtime that was paid out to all employees over the course of a three-year period. And in all instances, we were able to determine that the rate that they were getting paid was, was appropriate. We also looked into the time sheets and for approvals, and that process is a very manual process. The, you know, time cards are handwritten, you know, the, wasn't always legible on what the hours were or what the, you know, who the Hoover was. And for two of the pay periods, we were actually, we're not able to receive the supporting documentation for the overtime. You know, in discussions with Maria, we just, they could not locate it. I think that was in the March and April timeframe of 2018, I believe. So for here, and I think this is also something that's in process, we're gonna recommend that you institute an electronic time card, you know, time card application that will much more easily track individuals' hours, will be able to run reports. All this information will be retained, and, you know, I think Danielle told me earlier today that they're phasing this time card process in. So I think that's gonna be a good step, and it'll help, you know, eliminate all of this manual documentation. The last area that we reviewed was the, you know, the healthcare deduction. So we took a look at individuals who were, who had opted in to the healthcare plan and made sure that the amounts that were being, you know, deducted from their pay each period was appropriate, and that was the case. And we also reviewed the stipend payments for all individuals who are paid, who received a payment because they opted out of the healthcare plan. We reviewed all of those. And, you know, we're able to tie them out based on the approved listing that was provided to us by Human Resources. We were not provided like the individual forms for all of the individuals, like showing who, who signed up and who didn't sign up. We did our review based on a list being maintained by Human Resources. But we didn't note any issues in doing this review. So for this area, we're gonna recommend that somebody independent of the person who is performing the payroll activities or processing the payroll, do a review of the, like a spot check review, let's say, you know, do it quarterly or monthly, you know, pick 10, 15 employees, take a look at what their deductions are, are being, what their deductions are for the healthcare, and make sure it's in line with the contract and the appropriate amounts. And also, I think there should be an independent review of the amounts and who the checks are going to related to the opt-out payments that are being received in June and December. Somebody independent of the payroll process should, you know, do a review to make sure that those amounts are, are appropriate and signed off on before they're issued.
Okay.
Alright, so that's, that's our report, and I would thank Maria and Danielle for all of their help. It was, you know, a pretty long process, and I'm grateful for their assistance.
I appreciate them as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or concerns from the board?
If anybody on the staff could explain the missing overtime records from March or April from 2018, what was the deal with that?
I wasn't here.
Alright.
Danielle, I don't think was here either, so.
I mean, are they just?
I was not here.
Is it just a gap?
Well, there was a transition point where the former managers, we had like a, two managers within 16 months. So, you know, it's a revolving door. So what ends up happening is that I think that at the same time, the, the office staff for the manager's office, I believe, was either planning to retire or, you know, within the final months of retirement, so who knows? But I don't know. We don't.
I scanned the OT that was actually paid out during that period and, and didn't notice anything that was unreasonable or, or variance from prior weeks. So it didn't appear that there was anything inappropriate or anything extreme from an OT perspective during those timeframes. I think it was just a matter of luck.
Alright, alright. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Alright, thank you.
Take care, Adam.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Have a good night.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Laura, for being on this call.
Laura's not going anywhere.
Well, I still thank her.
Okay, okay.
Consider yourself pretty thanked, Laura.
Sounded like a dismissal. That's all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is communication to the board. This morning, I received, and the whole board received, a, an email from the Flood Committee that I promised them I would read into the record, and I'm gonna read it right now. Dear Mayor and Board of Trustees and Village Manager, on March 22nd, 2022, the FEMA, which is the Flood Committee, meeting by Zoom, the 30 Merrick resident, it should be residents, attendees, the most since the September flood. And at the other FEMA meetings, it was apparent that both members of the FEMA and community members are dissatisfied with the progress of flood protection in the Village of Merrick. The FEMA takes its role as flood mitigation advisor to the VOM very seriously and has been working at the issues below relentlessly. This letter is an attempt to begin to lay a path for better flood control in the Village of Merrick, a process for moving forward together for a drier Merrick. The tipping point for this dissatisfaction was a March 10th, 2022 US Army Corps of Engineers meeting between the mayor and the village manager, the US Army Corps of Engineers, and reps from various government agencies. There was no prior heads-up discussions with nor representation from FEMA. FEMA has been requesting a meeting since the fall of 2021. In addition, the trustees were unaware of the meeting, nor would they inform the afterwards. This dissatisfaction can be summed up on three points. Communication and cooperation between FEMA and the Village of Merrick, the Army Corps of Engineers project, projects the Village of Merrick can address itself. Fundamental to these two fronts is the need for transparency, communication, and participation between the Village of Merrick trustees and the administration, FEMA, members of our community, and the ACEs. FEMA politely and assertively requests again that the items be addressed immediately as a way to move forward so that community members can be provided with better flood protection starting ASAP. Attendance at the FEMA, these are the numbered items. One, attendance at the FEMA monthly meetings by village staff, village manager, assistant manager, designated, or the mayor. Meetings with and continued discussion with the US Army Corps of Engineers. During the 2016, 2017 discussions with the US Army Corps of Engineers members and community members, with all time and time again that the issues raised during the planning phase concluded in, I guess this is, I guess it's 217, I don't know what it, would be addressed at the start of the design phase. Currently, we're hearing input will be accepted by ACE at, which is the Army Corps of Engineers, a 60% design. This is way too late for successful projects. FEMA needs a seat at the ACE meetings as soon as does, as design begins. So issues raised during 26, 27 meetings with the community, FEMA, and VOM administration can begin to be addressed. Projects the Village of Merrick can address. There are many projects that the Village of Merrick can begin in-house. FEMA has been requesting pre and post Ida that these projects be implemented ASAP. At the March FEMA meeting, community members expressed frustration and anger that these projects were not being addressed. Products include cleaning rivers of debris, removing silt buildups, regular and emergency maintenance of storm drains, identifying and securing floatables, identifying and communicating emergency parking areas, improving the flood alert system, additional trash removals from home cleanouts, rate Ida, removal of the road to nowhere. We, the FEMA, and community members are looking to move forward together for a drier Merrick by communicating and participating transparently with the Village of Merrick trustees, administration, and the Army Corps. Sincerely, FEMA members. Okay, there's just a couple of things that I want to point out. Yes, there was a meeting on March 10th, 2022, or it wasn't March 8th, I forget. The tipping point, that was between the mayor and the village manager. Okay, what this meeting was, was this was a meeting between the governmental entities to decide what their individual responsibilities were toward the plan. The village manager had emailed the whole village board about the meeting happening. I attended for the first 10 meetings, 10 minutes of a meeting, basically just to thank all of the participants, all of the governmental agencies, for all the hard work they were doing for the Village of Merrick, to tell them how much we appreciated that. And I asked them, what's as soon, what's the soonest possible time we can have a meeting with the community and the Army Corps of Engineers? At which time, they told me that it was at the 60% design phase. After that, I went back to work. And then the staff dealt with the governmental agencies. And what this was, was a get-to-know-each-other meeting of the major governments. It was the New York State DEC, Westchester County, Village of Merrick, Army Corps of Engineers, and a representative, I believe, from Senator Schumer's office. So this was not a vast meeting to talk about design, a meeting to talk about the plan in particular. It was a meeting to talk about whose responsibility was what and how that was gonna be hashed out. I did not participate in that part of it. And I had nothing to report back other than that I thanked those who were helping us, which I believe was my place to do as the mayor of this community, to let other governmental agencies know that we appreciate their support, and we depend upon their support. and we depend upon their support and to show that appreciation by showing up and saying thank you. I did that in the middle of my workday and then I went back to work. So that's the first thing I wanted to talk about. Another item. Currently, we are hearing that input will be accepted by ACE at 60% design. This is way too late for a successful project. I just want to remind folks of what we have here. This is a plan that was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers already. This is not a new plan. This is a plan that was presented to the village. This is a plan that in some substance is the plan we have. This plan was funded under the IDA Relief Act. With a specific mind toward the Village of Mamaronek, Senator Schumer put in the IDA Relief Act that any plan that was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers already would then be funded by the Army Corps, by the IDA Relief Act. This absolved the Village of Mamaronek and the county of Westchester of any financial responsibility for this plan. You know, this was all communicated to everyone. This was communicated to the Board of Trustees. The fact that this meeting was happening was communicated to the Board of Trustees. There was no nefarious plotting, no nefarious, you know, plans being laid out without public input. And, you know, I explained this and I explained it to the Flood Committee and I'm sorry that I didn't explain it adequately. And, you know, I just want to point out some of the items that they talked about that weren't happening do happen. There was regular and emergency maintenance of storm drains. We have approved a flood alert system that was going to be in the budget this year. Removal of additional trash from homes after IDA. There has never been more trash picked up or more efficient cleanup of a community than this village had after IDA. I, 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 you know, it's amazing to me that, you know, the folks that have lived through all the floods, ask them how they felt about what happened this time. This was the first time the Village of Mamaronek ever pumped out anybody's basement. We did that this year. We picked up more garbage in two days than we usually pick up in three months. You know, removal of the road to nowhere. Road to nowhere is in Harrison. It is not in the Village of Mamaronek. I have facilitated two meetings between the mayor of Harrison and members of the Flood Committee. The first was when I first became mayor and Mayor Belmont was mayor of Harrison. The second was very recently where I met with a past chair of the Flood Committee and the present chair of the Flood Committee out on the road to nowhere with the present mayor of Harrison. And he told us he would look into it and get back to us. He got back to us and basically said Harrison isn't interested in doing this. Now, that might be something that, you know, Westchester County might get involved in. But the Army Corps of Engineers plan that we now have does not include removing that road. And let me just let folks know something. This is the plan we have now. Not saying we can't have input in it and we can't have, you know, our voices heard. But we're not getting a new plan. If we ask for a new plan, this is all gone tomorrow and we go back to square one. Square one, I'm telling you, if it ever happens, 15 years out. If it gets approved again. But why would the federal government do all that work for a community that would then have twice, twice turned down an Army Corps of Engineers plan? So while I understand the frustration and I understand the fear and I understand, you know, the trepidation that our residents have every time it rains really hard, we have never, ever, ever been this close before. We're on the one yard line. And I know people don't think things are happening, but things are happening. You know, Trustee Young has proposed a vast increase in the the budget for river cleanups in this community, which has not been going on in the past few years with the regularity that it should be going on.
We didn't, we didn't get to it in the work session.
And we will get to it in a future work session. But I just, you know, I want to work in cooperation with the Flood Committee. But, you know, we also have to tell people what the facts are. And, you know, I wanted to be the liaison to the Flood Committee. Trustee Natchez decided he wanted to do that, so, you know, I let that go. But I will be attending the Flood Committee meetings because I think it's important that, you know, when issues like this come up, we can have that discussion right away. You know, I talked to the chair of the Flood Committee in the past couple of days and I've told him how I viewed this and how I viewed, you know, what has happened. And, you know, so I, I am looking forward to working in cooperation and in tandem. But, you know, we all have to be on the same page with our facts. And, you know, I just want to point out that that meeting, which I attended for 10 minutes to give a salutation and to ask them to more quickly meet with the community was between government agencies and to hash out who had what responsibility. And it wasn't about design or anything like that. So with that being that, and I thank you for the indulgence of allowing me to explain my side of that. Lou, yeah.
I, the, I listened to a lot of it and Trustee Natchez can attest that they are very, very disappointed in us collectively for what we haven't done yet. Not that our hearts haven't been in the right places, but we simply haven't done enough by their lights. And I think the thing we can do is that they talk about the immediate addressing of the debris and silt buildup. I had, I took two tours of the rivers and I didn't know the other trustees, Nora and Dan and Vicar have all taken tours before. There's things that we can do right away. And we have the line, we have the program and the budget. We have the money that we can put into it. And we can let them know immediately that we care enough to just start doing something. They just want to see us do something. And I don't blame them. I don't blame them. So that's, that's, that's it. And we'll get to that. And I would hope that we could just all agree that that needs to happen quickly because, you know, this last flood really traumatized people. Okay, so that's, that's all.
We have participants with their hands up. Now it's communication through what? I just want to remind everyone. Communication to the board. You have five minutes, which is ample. I like to remind people that the Gettysburg Address was 272 words and it took two and a half minutes and it explained the origin, the progress, and the aftermath with the proposed aftermath of the Civil War. And I don't expect everybody to be Lincoln. But we don't have the Civil War either. Oh, and we've been joined by Augie Fusco.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening.
Okay, Mr. Gil. Let's go, Mr. Gil.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, thank you for reading the letter. Thank you all for paying attention to this, these issues. So I guess I would like to only talk about one thing and that's the Army Corps project. And Tom, I understand, Mayor Tom, that the core and the meeting that you had was very kind of preliminary. What I experienced five years ago with the villagers was anger five times worse than we saw last Tuesday night. And there was a whole bunch of questions. Where was the center line of the river going to go? How are the easements going to be taken, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And the Army's course response, again and again, as I said in the letter, was that at the beginning of the design project process, they would sit down with us and address these things. And so I really think that I'm not talking about taking bridges in or out. All I'm saying is all of these maybe minute or minute questions that our villagers had that were not answered last time, they said they would answer them at the beginning of the design phase. And I'd really like to hold them to that because I think that will make the project successful. And I think if we go down the road to 60% and we don't get this stuff on the table, then there's going to be a big hue and cry and and I'd like to avoid that. So I appreciate all the things that you all have been doing for the village. Thank you very much. I really would like to push the core to answer those questions that we had the last time. So that's, that's my two cents.
And Tony, I just want to let you know. And I do enjoy dialogue with you and I think you're doing a great job. So let me get that off the table there. But I will tell you this, I called Senator Schumer's office today and I asked them to have the Army Corps, you know, give us a date certain and to please speed it up. So I did make that call today.
Alright, great. Thank you very much. And thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Say that again?
I said, let's get, I'm just calling the next participant.
Hello, am I, am I heard?
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome to April where the toughest decision you have to make is, do you weep the ears or the tail first? Or do you like the yellow or pink peeps better? On the flood, on the flood, Lou is absolutely correct. The rivers do need a lot of work and hopefully you will once again have a work crew that will be maintaining the rivers on a regular basis when it's brought up at the next meeting. The kids did a great presentation. Two suggestions is they ought to do a book drive. There are homes that have literally hundreds of books that they could donate, lightly read books that they could donate from one part of the village to the other. And I always say with organizations like this, do a GoFundMe. State your case and this community is very, very generous with donations for that, for that type of project. We basically are coming back to the spring. We're going to be doing the budget soon. I look for a lot of input for that. The other one that was mentioned was the transfer station. Jerry mentioned on the transfer station that we're doing it in-house. Did we, did we spend any money on planning or did we also do the planning in-house?
We didn't spend any money on planning yet. That comes as part of the package.
Okay. So basically it would be planning and the materials, we're doing that in-house. Did we ever do the Harbor Master roof or are we going to also do that in-house?
We completed the Harbor estimate roof. We didn't do it in-house. We didn't, we didn't build that in-house.
And did we ever address the schoolhouse that also had a leak?
I don't think we did, but I have to check. Dan, do you remember that one?
I can't recall. I know there's some.
Can't recall, Glenn. Our mind is like mush most time, most days.
Okay, yeah, it was brought up at the same time. Little schoolhouse might need some roof work too. Thank you.
Good night, Glenn. Next up is Robert. Robert, unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At the Village's Board of Trustees' March 14th meeting, one second. I made the comment that I wished all members of the board would not make negative comments about one another as I was disturbed by the exchanges I had observed during that meeting and previous meetings. In response, the mayor shook his head, raised his voice, and attacked my integrity and did his best to intimidate me. By his very comments and tone, he made clear the reason for my remarks. Why is it so hard for some people to accept that sometimes not everyone will agree with everything one says or does? In fact, it is okay to disagree and even disapprove of some of the things others say or do. My exchange with the mayor was mentioned in the lowhead article entitled "Endorsement of Mamaronek Trustee Divides Democrats" published on March 16th, 2022. Anyone interested in listening to that exchange will find it on LMC Media titled "Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees' March 14th, 2022" on YouTube. This personal attack by the mayor is unfortunately a pattern for him. He repeatedly misuses his position to publicly denigrate any individuals not aligned with his policy positions or who oppose his ideas. He shouts and talks over anyone with whom he doesn't agree. There are residents who have been shocked and appalled by the mayor's impolite conduct, both publicly and privately. His inability to respect other opinions or collaborate with colleagues, his use of the press and social media to spread ugly and unsubstantiated innuendo regarding village officials and residents and his demeaning references to residents. The mayor of the Village of Mamaronek has no right to try to embarrass, ridicule, or intimidate a resident slash citizen who is calling in to offer constructive criticism regarding the behavior or the actions of members of the Board of Trustees. It is beneath the dignity of the office of the mayor and does not serve our village well.
Thank you, Robert. Next up is Maria D. Maria DeFiori. Maria, do you have your hand up?
Maria, unmute yourself.
Actually, she was on for the regular meeting.
Yeah, it's a different Maria D. I don't think Maria DeFiori is a panelist.
Oh, okay. Then go to Maria D. I'm sorry.
Different person.
Oh, I'm going to Maria D.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, I just wanted to say that I was in attendance at the Flood Mitigation Advisor Committee on the meetings on the 22nd. And that was when I learned that there was a meeting between the mayor, the village manager, and the Army Corps of Engineers on March 10th. I was shocked to learn this information, as was everybody else who was at that meeting. So I went back to the Board of Trustees recording of the work session and regular meeting on March 14th. And there was no mention of flooding during the meeting. But flooding was discussed during the work session. And on March 14th, four days after this meeting, no mention was made of the Army Corps meeting during the work session while flooding was being discussed with the chair of the Flood Mitigation Advisor Department. I find this lack of transparency appalling. The residents and business owners of our community who continue to suffer the effects of flooding deserve more respect and constant communication from you, even if it is to just say, there is a meeting, this is the date. And then after the meeting, come back and say, nothing was discussed, nothing of value was discussed. I just introduced myself. The people need to know. People are suffering from flooding constantly in this village and the lack of communication is apprehensible. This lack of transparency and communication cannot continue. In order to ensure that something like this does not happen in the future, I respectfully request that this Board of Trustees consider perhaps appointing a different member of the board to be the lead coordinator with the village manager on the Army Corps project. There is no excuses, blatant lack of transparency and communication in our village, and it needs to be corrected now. If we can't have someone who's going to communicate, then we need to appoint someone who can.
Yep, I just want to point out, Maria, and I thought I was clear. The board was aware that there was going to be a meeting. Jerry sent an email saying there was going to be a meeting. You know, that might not have been communicated at the Flood Committee meeting and I'm sorry about that. But it should have been because it was knowledge known by the board. I was there for 10 minutes. I had nothing to report. And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry that you're upset about that. But there was not anything substantive to report because I was just there in my capacity as mayor to thank them and to hope that they, you know, continue working hard for our community, which I think is my responsibility. And frankly, I'll keep doing that responsibility. But thank you for your input.
I understand that, Mayor. I understand you were the goodwill ambassador. But the meeting continued after the ten minutes that you were there. And no one was given a report as to what happened until just now, when you received a letter from the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee demanding to know what happened. Otherwise, none of this would have come out. If it hadn't been by happenstance that the flood committee found out about it, none of this would have come out. We live a democracy, and we need to be transparent. And thank you for your time.
I really take umbrage at that. I haven't extremely transparent. I have been breaking, you know, my neck to try and get this flood plan done. You know, we we started a petition which thousands of people in this village signed. You know, I have been mentioning it and calling elected officials nonstop. I'm sorry that you were disappointed at the flood committee meeting, but that is not the totality of what has happened in this community. And, you know, you know, and also, I think, you know, just for future reference, when you appear before the Board of Trustees to speak about an issue, and you are an appointed member of a board of commission, you should identify yourself as that member. That is something that's in the village code. So the next time, please just identify that you're a member of the Ethics Board when you come before the board to talk about an issue of your concern. And, you know, you can talk to the other members of the board, and I'm sure the Ethics Board, they'll they'll tell you that's that's the protocol. But thank you. The next up is Mr. O'Connor. I assume it's Mr. O'Connor, Timmo. I'm sorry, you know what? You do Bernie first. Bernie was there first, and then we'll get to Tim.
Hello. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Bernie.
Okay. Had a couple of statements, a couple of questions maybe you can answer. I'm not here to fight with you guys. I think you guys are doing a good job. You know, trying to get this off of the off of the ground. Good intentions, which I kind of like. But there needs to be, there needs to be a little bit more focus on this flood situation from all of you guys. Less fighting. You know, Lou, Lou was on the mitigation going after Dan Nanches about political. You know, you voted for this. You know, I see you guys, you know, the Army Corps of Engineer, we would, the plan was 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 supposed to be done a few years ago, but Trump threw it down. I'm sick of all that stuff. We need to just focus and and start concentrating on this. This should be the number one thing on your guy's agenda every single time that you come to these meetings. That's my, excuse me, my first thing. You said that the plan was already done through the Army Corps of Engineers. And my question is, if it's if it was already done and it's already there, then why are we waiting for this sixty percent for them to have this meeting? That's my first question.
I think I'd like to try and take a shot at answering that. And Jerry, if you could, if I miss something, please feel free to jump in here. You know, the outline of the plan was approved by Congress, I think, in twenty seventeen. Like any big engineering plan, they don't do the specific drawings and the specific, you know, environmental, you know, review and then looking at the environment that is being built in until it's approved and until the money is there. So we're there now, and they're actually, you know, you send it, they they send a set of plans out to be bid upon, right?
Yeah, but there's this, there's this plan that's on the website, on your website.
Let me finish.
Okay.
That isn't big documents, right? That's a plan, a conceptual plan, which is the basis for the bid documents.
Okay.
Once they do the bid documents, and, you know, they start that design, then they're gonna, you know, and what I've been told, then they can confer with us. And then they're gonna send out, you know, those bid documents for contractors to bid upon so that the work can begun begin. Jerry, is that in some substance what it is?
Yeah, Mayor, when Dan and I and Chief Leahy at the time reviewed the sixty percent plans for the work that's going to be done on Marineric Avenue by the county, the sixty percent plans represent the time when the design team goes back to the community and asks for all the changes that they're looking for. So that's what you can't change a design unless you have something preliminary. And that's what we did with Marineric Avenue, and that's why we were able to move Waverly Avenue.
Okay, that's fine, but there's a there's a plan that's out there that was out there in oh seven, after the oh seven thing. And that is a plan. And there was this, there was this pipe that's going through Columbus Park, and they're going to dredge the rivers. Is that the plan that they're gonna do, or is they're going to a holy?
No, that's the plan, Bern. That's the plan.
So so why are they waiting for sixty percent to come out and have this meeting if the plan is already out there? That's my question is.
Jerry, just explain that again.
So that you can recommend the design changes in the sixty percent plan. The sixty percent plan is barely halfway done. And so what you do is you look at the preliminary design that they're providing you, and you recommend and make changes or negotiate those changes based on different factors, Bern. So then it then it goes to a ninety percent plan, which is almost done. And then at that point, the final changes, the final adjustments are made to the plan, and then the final one hundred percent plan and bid documents are produced. So that's the process for any engineering project. So the plan was to create, the plan was developed to identify the funding that's needed to see which partners were going to be moving, you know, to be participating in what in what level as far as, you know, millions of dollars. That plan, that plan has been in place. The money is now in place, and now they're starting to design it so that they can actually get the work done.
Okay, but that plan that's out on your website is a construction plan, and it's it's, I don't know if it's misleading. Maybe it's misleading to me, may, you know, because it's, they're putting in a pipe, they're 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 moving things around. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm looking at a, we're all worried about the construction plan, like, what's gonna happen? Like, how are they gonna do this? That's that's what I think everyone's looking at. Like, when when are they gonna, when are they gonna bring the backhoes in and do this stuff? And I'm looking at it, well, there should, I I agree, there should be a plan, but what is the plan? And I think that's why it's a little misleading on the website. You have a plan, an engineered plan of construction plans on the website.
The plan on the website is the plan that they're going to design documents so that it can be put out to bid so that it can be constructed. That's just a plan. They don't have, the design ends up being all of the detail, all of the nitty gritty, all of the small stuff. And so at the sixty percent level, that's when it gets reviewed by the village and others. And the changes are made based on whatever changes are permitted to be made. In addition to that, the DC, who's also a project manager on this project, recommends and brings to the table whatever they can. Because the DC has another pot of money that they want to participate in adding additional benefits outside of the village. They want to do work in Harrison. They want to do work in Scarsdale. They want to do work in the town of Marineric so that it helps lessen the impact that we're going to have to deal with. That's the kind of stuff that the DC would bring to the table at the sixty percent level.
Okay, okay, that's.
Bernie, Bernie, I gotta move on. I'm sorry, my friend.
I have a que, I have questions, though. I got five minutes. I got five minutes to talk. You guys talked for three of the five minutes.
Bernie.
What?
We're trying to get to everybody, and there's a five minute limit.
Tom, Tom, you're, Tom, you taught, you guys talked for.
We were answering your questions.
No, no, you stopped me when I started. I have a list of questions. And then you said, I understand that. I get that. But you, I talked for a minute. You talked for four minutes. That's not, that's not talking for five minutes.
Yeah, I did stop the clock when Tom was addressing your.
Okay, so what I, how many, what are we, what am I up to?
I've got twenty seconds left now.
All right. Oh, now I got twenty seconds now because I have to.
Bernie, calm down. Ask your next question.
Okay, my next question is, is if this plan is done, why is not the reservoir being addressed here? If 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 this plan is, or if, do you guys know if this if this reservoir is if the reservoir is in the plan with the dam in the plan and the dredging of the reservoir? Because my feeling is, is 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 it, this is all gonna be off or not if we don't fix that dam in that reservoir. Because there's there's too much water coming down here. You can't, you gotta slow it. You have to slow this down. And my other, my other thing is, you guys, you need to put more pressure on Harrison, Scarsdale, White Plains, and all these upriver towns. And you need to, you need, Tom, you need to be our speaking, you need to be our mouthpieces here. And my other, and my other question is, is who are the contractors doing this? Is the Army Corps coming in and doing this? Or are you gonna get, are you gonna get some outside contractor who you're gonna have to throw off like you, like the Jefferson Avenue Bridge? And you're gonna have to throw them off the job when they start the job and becomes just a cluster F. After that, that was my other question.
What does the F mean in the cluster? What does the F mean?
I'll say it over the air. I don't care.
All right. Thank you, Bernie. Go to Timmo. Timmo. Tim, unmute yourself, please. Tim?
Tim O'Connor and Rita O'Connor, Washington Street. Just to piggyback off the streams, we definitely need the cleaning of the Sheldon Drake without a doubt. I had some of the trustees working, walking around a few, last week or so, walking around for a few days. It's, it really needs, it's been actually a lot of work needs to get cleaned up over there. It's been neglected for years. And so one of the things that I did point out is the industrial section that parallels the Sheldon Drake there, there is no fencing. So when the flood came, you know, it took everything from the industrial section and floated right down to the Sheldon Drake. And there was no barrier or fencing to prevent all that stuff from flowing into the Sheldon Drake, causing tires to be there, pallets and so forth. So maybe that could be addressed, you know, while we're coming up with a game plan. The other thing I want to ask is that if you could bring this to the next work session and put this on your agenda and fund it right off the bat, that'd be great. The last thing here is, you know, one of the things that don't work well for us here during rainstorms are the pitching of the streets and the collections of the sewer drains. Washington Street continually floods and pools at every rainstorm. The water is standing water. We have, we have some pictures in, so you guys are aware of the situation. Other than that, you know, we really def definitely need the support from the board. This is all optics. We're all watching you guys draw out a plan and to implement something here, the low hanging fruit, as the Flood Advisory Committee calls it.
Hi, this is Rita. I just needed a few minutes. I'm gonna talk really briefly and kind of piggyback on what Maria DeRose said earlier about transparency. You know, I don't know if there's a way you guys can create some meeting minutes and have it in a central location where anybody could go onto the site to see what's been done. You know, we are all watching. You know, I live on Washington Street. I've lived through the two thousand seven flood, and I lived through Ida. In two thousand seven, we had almost six feet of water in our home, and we lost everything on the first floor of our home. And during Ida, we had almost seven feet of water, and we're still living through it. I know everyone's kind of gone on, you know, with their life, but we're still, we're still living, we're still in the hell, living through it. Some people are still displaced. Some people have lost their homes. So we are watching. Nothing has been done in all the months since Ida. And, you know, I, I, with a heavy heart, tried to rebuild back my home, knowing that nothing has been done to change the problem or to fix the problem, and it could happen again. And so we want to know what's going on. We want to know what's happening. If you don't want our input, that's one thing, but you need to be transparent about what's happening. So we stop asking the questions. We need to know at any given time where we're at. If it was just a meet and greet meeting, why not let us know about it? So we don't have to go back and ask the questions, and there's not rumors going around, you know, what's going on, what's not happening, and why aren't they telling us? We really want to know everything, you know, of real time, what, where you guys are at with this plan. If it's, if you think it's menial, you know, just, we still want to know about it. So I don't know if there's a way to create some meeting minutes or a website or somewhere we can just all go and know, you know, what's going on with the with the plan.
You know what, Rita, you make a good point. And I think that possibly a solution to that was would be maybe on the village website to have a link that said flood news. And we can update it every time that, you know, we make a little progress, or even if we if we backslide and there's a problem, we should put it up there. And this way, people can just click on the link and see where we are, where we're going.
I think that's a great idea. I don't know if you have a project manager per se, but with a timeline of, you know, target dates, and we can see if we're meeting those target dates and seeing for each phase what what we're supposed to be doing. I mean, any information, at least we can see where we're at. And, you know, maybe, maybe it'll, it'll cut down on the amount of questions you're gonna be asked because you're gonna be getting a lot of, you know, questions. We want answers. We want to know that this is on the forefront of this village and that everybody, this is a priority on any, on everyone's table.
And, you know, and I will start, when I can, I can't promise I'll be there for everyone, but I'll start attending the FEMA, the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee, so you get the, you get, you get it straight from me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim and Rita. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Now let's go to the bodies.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, James Abadi. So, you know, on the transparency situation, I'd like to ask a question to the, to the board. Since the mayor notified everybody about this meeting, can I ask the board, everybody was notified that this meeting was occurring?
I knew because I asked Jerry a while back what was going on with the, with the Army Corps, and he told me we got a meeting coming up, and it's just scheduling and doing stuff. And I said, boy, it'd be nice to be at that. He goes, well, they want to keep it on the lowdown until we get to sixty percent. So I said, yeah, I knew about it.
And there was, there was an email that Jerry sent out about it.
All right, well, my question is, and my question is, as a taxpayer, I'm asking all the trustees, since you said, Mayor, that you notify everyone about this meeting, and since this is the main question, I'm asking the other trustees, were they notified about this meeting? Nora, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I, I, there was an email that went out February eighth saying that Jerry was gonna try and set up a meeting, but no one, we weren't told about the meeting. And, you know, I think that this is like a lesson. We can't operate this way anymore. You know, the meeting was March tenth. I'm with Tony Gelber. I was on the Flood Mitigation Committee with him for many years before I was a trustee. I was, I know that the Army Corps made promises to start answering questions once they got to the design phase. I know that the Army Corps needs to be transparent. It's part of what the requirement for their process is. And I think it's too bad that two weeks ago, after this meeting happened, it wasn't discussed at the meeting. We can't go on that way. And while it's great that Tom is gonna go to the, is gonna keep people informed, the reality, he's not the designated liaison for the Board of Trustees for the flood. For the, we, there is no designated liaison with the Army Corps. So I think we need to understand what the process is. I think the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee needs to be very involved in this process. I think Dan, as somebody who has experience working with the Army Corps that none of the rest of us have, and as the liaison, need to be involved in this process. And, you know, it's, you know, government works slowly. This isn't going to be a fast process, but we all need to be informed and, you know, get the questions answered, hopefully before we ask them, but to make the process more efficient. But yeah, we all need to But, yeah, we all need to work on this project together and make sure that everybody's informed every step of the way.
All right, thank, thank you Nora, and, and, and the, the reason I ask that question is because Mayor Murphy is saying that he notified everyone and he emailed everyone that there, there was a meeting. Um, and you're saying, no, um, yeah, that's why I asked, the, um, the, the Flood Mitigation Committee should be more aggressive and they should have been involved in everything, whether it was gonna be an intensive, uh, meeting, whether it was not gonna be an intensive meeting, doesn't matter. But Mayor, you're, you're shaking your head, but you just said that you notified everyone, you emailed all the Board of Trustees.
I can send you the email.
What's that?
I can send you the email.
All right, so, so let me ask Dan Ashes then, since he's also on the Flood Mitigation Committee. Were you aware of that meeting? Before? Or after that that meeting would occur or was going to occur?
Unmute. Technical difficulties. Um, the answer is, I was not aware of the Mar- the March tenth meeting. We had, the board had directed Jerry once, sometime back to, uh, try and set up a meeting with the Corps. And Jerry said he was in the process of doing so. Did not know that the meeting would take place on December tenth. Did not know on the fourteenth after the board meeting and did not know, um, until, uh, I got an email that, uh, the village manager sent to, um, uh, the Chair of the, of FEMA, uh, that the meeting had taken place.
All right, thank you, and, and this is just what I'm trying to say, it's not that, you know, as, as a taxpayer, as a person and, and that lives in the flats, as a person that's been flooded, you know, this, this is disheartening because, you know, there's con- there's contradictions here, what the mayor's saying, what, what everybody's saying, at the end of the day, we're sitting here still trying to revamp from the flood and, and, and it's, and it's hard, you know, it's, it's hard for us to hear this. The other, I, I'm gonna have another question there, um.
Okay, and just, just to answer your question, th- this is what Jerry wrote. "I told everybody in the Board of Trustees that the first meeting was with the staff and the mayor only attended for ten minutes to thank everyone for their anticipated work. He was doing elevated work at the Veterans Hospital that day. I was transparent and communicated with you on February eighth, twenty twenty-two. At the meeting on March tenth, we asked when we could bring in others and they said at the sixty percent phase of design." So on February eighth, Jerry sent an email telling us that he was gonna meet with the board of, you know, I'm sorry, with the Army Corps and the other, you know, governmental agencies. And nobody said, hey, I wanna be there or anything like that.
Said he was gonna set up a meeting, Tom, he didn't say there was a meeting set up.
None of you said, hey, I wanna be there or we should participate.
I thought we were about it, Tom.
Don't yell, don't yell. No one on this board said I wanna participate, no one on this board said I want FEMA to be there or anything like that.
All right, so, so let's, listen, instead of arguing, I, I just, I have to bring it up. They shouldn't have to say they wanted to be at the meeting. If, if, if it was a known fact that there was going to be a meeting, then I'm sure somebody would have said, listen, we need to be there, or the Flood Mitigation Committee, listen, no, Mayor, you said that, well, I'm not, I'm not trying to attack. Well, you get upset, but you, you said that you told everyone there was a meeting. Yeah.
Okay, I said everyone knew there was a meeting.
Okay, listen Mayor.
And I know specifically that I had asked.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know why nobody else asked Jerry when the meeting was gonna be and if we could go. But Jerry, you remember the conversation we had?
Yep.
Yeah, I asked, can I go?
So, before the record, anytime there's a meeting, before the meeting, make sure everybody knows and then we won't have these conversations anymore.
Well, so.
That's what I, that's what, that's what I was getting at.
So, so Jimmy, Jimmy, if you can, so I'll respond to that, so that's okay, I have no problem with that. But I said in that email that the first meeting will be with staff. That's what I said. Everyone knew the first meeting was gonna be with staff. And that's exactly what it was gonna be, me and Dan. That's what it said in the email.
Nora, I'm sorry, I went to thank them for their, for helping this community. I did not go to participate in the staff meeting, so please don't mischaracterize it. And, and it was totally appropriate and good that I did that. You know, this, this community is getting help from a lot of people. And as the chief elected officer, I went and I thanked those people. And I took the time out of my workday to do this.
All right, well, that's, listen, Mayor, we appreciate that, okay? Um, we just transparency is what I'm, I'm getting at because and, and if we can't trust one another, then what are the taxpayers watching this? Where, where does that leave us? But my other, my other, my other question is, I'm gonna move on from that. Um, that, you know, the transfer station, I know you guys are talking about fixing it. Let me ask you a question, why do the other municipalities don't have a transfer station? Mount Vernon, Rye, Harrison, um, Portchester, they all go right to the dumps, directly to the dump and dump their garbage. And, and the other thing is, why do we have a transfer station right on our brook and it's in a residential area in a floodplain? Why can't we try to do away with this transfer station? Cause I know it was pushed here years ago. And it, and it stinks, I know it's supposed to be construction, but we smell garbage at all times, at all times. As soon as it gets hot, it's disgusting. Um, I'm just asking, is there a way that we can try to get rid of the transfer station? Cause I don't think we should have it here, honestly.
Are, are you talking about the village transfer station or the private transfer station?
Well, you got, you got two.
No, I understand, that's what I mean.
Most of, most of the municipalities, I, I work sanitation. They go right to the dump, they don't dump any garbage on the floor or on the grounds. They bring their trucks directly to the, to the dumps. There's one in Yonkers, one in Mount Vernon, and one in White Plains. We smell garbage all summer long here, it's disgusting.
I know the town of Amaric has a transfer station over on, on Maxwell.
Well, what, what I'm asking you is the construction, which so-called construction, uh.
That's the private, that's the private.
Right, why is it that it's allowed to be?
That's a good question.
In Amaric, is there anything we can do to try to?
Good question.
That, that's a good question, and that was a deal probably somebody made a long, long time ago. Uh, and you're right, they've been nothing but.
But plus, plus Mayor, that's the counties, the suburban handles all of the county material. They have a contract with them.
I used to work with them and they got a contract years ago that nobody has questioned, but it's on a floodplain. It's disgusting and, you know, honestly, somebody should look into it, try to get rid of it.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abadi.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, let's get to a voluminous agenda. Public hearing. Public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tentative budget. Uh, I need a motion, please, to open this public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Well, uh, somebody call the roll, let's call the roll.
Augie, do you want me to do it? Trustee Young?
Yes.
Sanchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Tefor seems to be absent.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. All right, Jerry, the floor is yours.
Okay, and go into presentation mode and then I'll introduce it.
Mayor, a second. Go ahead, no, go ahead, go ahead. I read it.
Okay, so, um, the remaining trustees. The, uh, the tentative budget was, was, uh, um, uh, stamped in last week, um, several days before the deadline. Um, the budget, as you already know, um, has been a, um, a, a very collaborative process with our staff. Uh, they're really getting good at it. Um, we're making some changes regarding how we approach the, the, uh, the department head level, um, uh, budget process. And then, uh, we really rely on, or I rely on, um, Augie and Laura and Dan to complete the process. I do have, uh, um, the privilege of making a couple of final edits and everyone's thrilled about that. But the truth is, um, this budget is, is one of our better budgets. And, um, we're looking forward to, uh, to having some additional initiatives presented by the Board of Trustees during the department head level meetings so that they can help the departments with some of the items that, uh, they may have left out of this budget. Uh, but there's some significant room in the budget, uh, to be able to, um, if the board wants to, um, get up to, um, up to the cap. Um, and Dan, I'm gonna pass it on to Dan so he can explain, uh, the numbers and the budget and the stuff that we worked on, um, last week and today, so go ahead, Dan.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yep, so, uh, first we'll just start with calculating the, the tax rate and it's just, uh, basically a little bit of, uh, high school mathematics. I can.
Dan, just make sure you speak up so everyone can hear it.
So, uh, the, the total general fund budget as, uh, uh, as recommended by the manager is forty-one million, forty-one million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh, to calculate the tax rate, uh, we just kinda work backwards, we estimated approximately thirteen million, four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in revenues with additional six hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. That leaves the remaining balance to be raised in the property tax levy of twenty-seven million, two hundred sixty-five dollars and that, two hundred sixty-five, nine hundred two dollars. Uh, and based on the current, uh, valuation of property in the village, uh, it yields a tax rate of six point six dollars and four cents for one thousand dollars of assessed value for your property. And as the board knows, we are at full value. And that's actually allowed us to really maintain a stable, uh, tax base and a stable tax rate uh, for the last, I think, five, six years now. Uh, in terms of the property tax cap, uh, this is just kind of a, uh, uh, a summary of the sheet that we go out. Uh, there's a spreadsheet that the New York State Comptroller's Office provides to us. Uh, and, uh, based on, uh, the incorporation of last year's levy, uh, the pilots, the payment in lieu of taxes, available levy growth, uh, the natural growth in the, uh, tax base, uh, the tax levy can increase, uh, by five hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars. Uh, but based on, uh, a number of those, uh, revenues and expenditures which are gonna be, uh, we're estimating less on certain expenditures and more on certain revenues, uh, we've managed to, uh, fall well below that tax cap amount by three hundred eleven thousand, three hundred two dollars. Uh, we're actually looking to increase the overall levy, uh, based on our calculations is two hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. Uh, that's based on looking at the change in the, uh, the levy, the, in just counteracting with some of our major cost, uh, uh, drivers, which include our benefits, which, um, I think right now are somewhere around uh, eighty percent of our salary, is that, uh, am I remembering correctly, Jerry?
Nope. Say that again.
Uh, eighty percent is our fringe benefit rate.
So, so eighty percent, uh, of, uh, for every dollar that we pay an employee, eighty cents is added to fringe benefits, which is medical, pension, taxes, et cetera.
I could, yep. And this is a, a ten-year history of our fund balance, this is the total fund balance, uh, the unrestricted, I believe, is a rule over fourteen million dollars right now. But as you can see, there's been a, a steady growth in our fund balance, you know, because of, you know, shrewd financial management. And then, you know, we've had some, uh, uh, we try to, even though we adopt a budget, you know, budget is a spending plan. Uh, we try to, uh, you know, through the course of the year, manage our resources so we don't spend every last penny. Uh, you know, even if we finish a million dollars less, that's only a three percent variance from uh, what's, you know, typically adopted. So three percent over the course of, uh, one year, it really isn't a lot of, uh, a lot of flexibility.
This is, this is very, this is, this is very, Dan, I just wanna add, this is very strong management and, and while I can't take any credit for, for prior to two thousand eighteen or, or, you know, some of two thousand nineteen, I'll try anyway. But the truth is, this is, this is serious, serious focus on the dollar and focus on management. Uh, this graph wouldn't look, this bar graph wouldn't look this way if we weren't focused on every dollar around here. Thank you.
We try to be as efficient as the municipalities in New Jersey, Jerry.
Yep, yep, that's not easy to do.
Yep. Uh, this is the, uh, a comparison of what are available fund balances as opposed to the annual operating budget over the course of, uh, the last, uh, ten years. Uh, and the, uh, the final, uh, column in yellow is, was proposed for, uh, you know, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, based on the available unrestricted fund balance. And the tentative budget, uh, yields a fund balance of approximately thirty-four point two percent, sorry, thirty-four point two percent of operations. Uh, these are our, uh, the annual growth in the levy, uh, for the last ten years. Uh, again, uh, if you look at five million dollars over the course of, uh, you know, ten years, that's a, you know, half a million dollars a year, uh, from a whole number, which on a, you know, was started as a twenty-two million dollar budget, it's currently, or sorry, twenty-two million dollar levy, it's currently twenty-seven. You know, actually it's less than five million, it's about four and a half million. So again, we, we do try to control our costs. I'm, I'm fairly confident the CPI has probably gone up more in the last ten years than our tax levy has.
No way, no.
Yeah, it might have gone up this last year more than our tax levy has. Uh, these are our equalized, uh, tax rates for fiscal years twenty-two, I said twenty-twelve, fifteen through twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, what's important to note is, I believe it was the, uh, you know, the twenty-fourth, the twenty fifteen, sixteen year, I believe was our first, uh, year on, uh, full value. Uh, the other years prior were equalized value. Uh, but again, we've been able to maintain, you know, six dollars, six cents, six dollars, four cents, five dollars, ninety-seven, a very consistent tax rate, uh, over the last three years as opposed to those first three, which we went from five forty-three to six seventeen for, uh, equalized tax rate. So it's, uh, you know, you, you can see the benefit of having full value, uh, with, uh, that type of, uh.
You know, just, I, I'd like to comment on that a second.
Absolutely.
You know, uh, I was on the board in two thousand and five, uh, when the town of Rye was the first municipality in Westchester County, uh, to go to full value. Uh, and the supervisor was, uh, Mr. Bobby Morobito of Sacred Memory.
Yep.
And, uh, Bobby came to a Village of Amaric Board of Trustees meeting when everybody's, uh, full value was Asian, uh, came to them in the mail. And that was the closest I ever saw anybody to, to, to not making it out of a Village of Amaric Board meeting. And I've had some difficult Village of Amaric Board meetings, but that was brutal. And the guy stood there for hours and let people, you know, just abuse him and, uh, try to explain what had happened. And, uh, yeah, I, 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 and, and we're reaping the benefits of Mr. Morobito's, uh, foresight today. And I just wanna, he's gone to his great reward and I just wanna point out that sometimes people are a long, long forgotten.
Yeah.
At a good impact.
That's a good story.
People may start out as iconoclasts, but then they, uh, become the standard. Uh, again, these are, are assessed values, uh, for the village. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, you know, seen, you know, steady growth the last several years and obviously, uh, with the, uh, uh, the post-COVID, uh, you know, booms, uh, you know, we're still seeing, you know, nice growth in our, uh, overall evaluation, which is part of the, uh, component of how we determine our tax levy uh, increase, uh, allowable ability. This is just a distribution of expenses by, uh, you know, type. Uh, these are the classifications that you'll see in the budget. Uh, obviously, you know, some of these are pretty self-explanatory, gen- public safety is police, fire, building department. Uh, health is a, you know, pretty small number, I think that might just be the, uh, Uh, health is a, you know, pretty small number. I think that might just be the, uh, the, uh,
Health insurance.
Health insurance. No, no, that's the, uh, employee benefit. The health may just be the community council, et cetera, to be fair standing. Uh, transportation is, uh, highway. Uh, economic assistance is a small number. Cultural recreation, that's the, uh, recreation parks and harbor. Uh, home and community service, uh, that's some of the, uh, uh, I think that maybe some recreation provision as well. And then employee benefits is employee benefits. And as you can see, it's, uh, you know, twenty-nine percent of the overall budget. But as, uh, we mentioned earlier, it's a significant fringe benefit rate. And those are costs that are totally beyond our control. Uh, these are our retirement expenses, uh, for the last several years. And what, what you don't should, what you don't see here is when I first started in this crazy business, uh, the, back in the, uh, early two thousands, that number was close to zero. Uh, because that was when you had, the, uh, stock markets were, uh, high on the internet craze. Uh, and, you know, it's been, uh, dramatically increasing for many years. Uh, but the good news is, is that we are realizing, uh, a significant reduction in our pension payments for next fiscal year, uh, going from three point two million to just slightly under two point nine million.
Yep.
Uh, this is our healthcare, which is not as rosy a, uh, answer, uh, a, a picture as the pension is for this year. Uh, our medical expenses are, uh, seem to be ever, ever rising. Uh, you know, we're going to see an approximate six hundred fifty thousand dollar increase, uh, from, uh, the current year to the, uh, next fiscal year. And, you know, that's really a number beyond our control. Uh, and if you can't see some of these squares, I apologize. It's, uh, I'm trying to contrast it a little bit. These are the comparable tax rates for the various levels of, uh, government that village residents pay taxes to. Uh, the, uh, the top two, you see the red and the purple. The red is the, uh, school tax uh, rate, uh, for the Ryne Next School District, uh, below. Then the next two are the, uh, county rates paid by Town of Rye residents at Town of Mamarone residents. Because the towns, uh, by law are the collection agencies for the, uh, the county. Uh, we are the, uh, I'm sorry, that, I said, the side one over side six is the village. The two below that are the county, which are collected by the town. And the lowest one is the library tax that village residents pay. Yep. Uh, and this is just, uh, how the average, uh, tax bill is a portion on a annual basis again for Town of Mamarone residents, forty-one percent of the school, twenty-five of the village. We've got two percent for the library, one and a half percent for the county. That's slightly different breakdown for Ryne Next residents. Then, uh, this is the, um, the major non-discretionary cost differences uh, in this year's budget. Uh, again, uh, the, uh, allocated insurance is going up to sixty, a decrease of three sixty-eight in the pension, a decrease of eighty-six thousand in FICA, which is likely related to, uh, the savings we've been able to achieve in our salaries through the renegotiated, renegotiation of our union contracts. Uh, workers' comp is going down slightly. Uh, but as I noted, health insurance is going up. So those, you know, items just alone account for four hundred and fifty, forty-five thousand of the potential allowable five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
But that is, uh, countermanded by some of these revenue, uh, drivers. Uh, obviously our interest is not going up or, forecasting a decrease in that, but, uh, we are forecasting a seven hundred thirty thousand dollar increase in our sales tax, uh, which is based on, uh, the results that we've seen, uh, to date. Uh, please traffic detail reimbursement. We are increasing that by approximately two hundred ninety thousand. Uh, parking is going up about fifty-five thousand. Uh, we're increasing the debt service contribution by nearly three hundred thousand dollars. And some of the miscellaneous fees are going up, which is mostly stated as going by a hundred, one hundred fifty-three thousand. Uh, and then these are just some of the comparison of tentative budget, uh, tax rate increases from our fellow villages. Uh, we are the, aside from the homestead rates in Portchester and Ryne Brook, uh, we are the only community that's seeing a tax rate decrease. Every other community is seeing an increase. But, you know, as you can tell, I think through some of the same economic factors we're seeing with these revenue enhancements and, uh, major decline in the pension, uh, the tax rate changes do seem to be uh, somewhat, uh, even the tentative budget is somewhat reasonable and, uh, consistent across all, you know, the various villages. Uh, just summary of the major items, proposed tax levy increase of two hundred eighty-three thousand. Again, three hundred eleven less than were allowed. A functional proposed tax rate decrease of one point six nine percent. Uh, tax rate decrease of ten cents per thousand of assessed value. Uh, you know, uh, increase in total expenditures of four point six percent. Uh, decrease in pension contribution to large increase in healthcare costs. Uh, what I did add here was, uh, we are proposing to add positions to, uh, staff a planning division and an engineering department. Uh, and we're all, we're doing that all within the, uh, the liable tax cap. But, uh, your topics for future discussion, uh, you know, capital, capital, capital. Uh, uh, we, we, we talk with the board and, you know, make sure that, uh, the bu, the priorities and the capital budgets are aligned. And, uh, you know, we're working on the items that the board wants us to work on. Uh, the departmental budget presentations will be taking place over the next several weeks. And we do need to discuss village-wide using charges uh, that may yield some additional revenue. Uh, again, forty-one million, three twenty-one, two ninety. Tax layer twenty-seven, two six five, nine oh two. And this is how we just get that. Uh, and this is the, uh, budget work sessions for the next month, uh, beginning on Wednesday, uh, going through April twelfth. Uh, we have the public hearing tonight and have tentatively scheduled, uh, the budget adoption with the, uh, grace on April twenty-fifth, which is their second regularly scheduled meeting in April. And that concludes the budget presentation.
Thank you, Dan Sarno.
Very much. Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
Thanks, Saul.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, there's a question from Glenn.
I was going to share your screen.
Yeah.
Lynn.
Start working off your computers. We got one.
Hey. With question. The, uh, tax rate is going down one point six per, five percent. But we're actually going to be increasing by one point oh one percent, um, what we collect in taxes, correct?
That's right. You got that right on.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
That, uh, point out is, and I'll do more with, uh, when we discuss, um, with, with the budget is it's extremely tight budget. It's, um, the revenues need to have some discussion. And biggest thing, we have to find money for capital projects. There are, are, we have a backlog of capital projects. And at some point, we're going to have to start to address and, and have additional funds to deal with them. You simply can't, um, uh, uh, bond every single capital project. Eventually you do have to start to pay for them. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second. No, not, well, not close, adjourn.
Yeah, I think you're right. Adjourn.
Okay, adjourned. So moved.
Second.
Uh, who's Sally Coroll?
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Tefor. Mayor, Mayor Murphy.
Hi, I just want to thank, uh, the staff. This is welcome news. Uh, board should be happy. Uh, everyone in the community should be happy. Uh, this is a, a, a budget that is fiscally sound, a budget that is, uh, well thought out, provides for the needs of our community. And, uh, you know, of course will be looked at extensively by the board trustees. I really, really want to thank staff for the excellent work.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Uh, public hearing on PLLB twenty twenty-two to exceed the tax cap. Uh, this is something we do every year. Uh, we, we vote on a resolution uh, to open a public hearing so that if we need to exceed the tax cut, uh, we have, uh, the ability to. I consider this, you know, kind of like walking a tightrope, but you, you have the net underneath you. Uh, so I need a motion to open the public here.
So moved.
Second.
Sally Coroll.
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Oh, and being consistent, I don't believe that we ever.
Lucas.
Yes.
Tefor's accent and trust, I'm sorry, Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Okay, uh, but like I said, what, what this is, this doesn't mean that we're exceeding the tax cap. This is prudent government. Uh, this is being uh, careful. And if the tax cap had to be, you know, if we, if we had a flood, if we had a, an, an emergency uh, that required us to break the tax cap, like, uh, an, another pandemic and a, a flood on top of that, which we all know that can happen, we would be ready to do it. Uh, any questions or concerns or comments for the board?
No, it just the processes. We have to keep this open until we adopt the budget and then we decide whether or not.
I make a motion that we adjourn this to April twenty-fifth.
Second.
Well, good, uh, Sally, please call roll.
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
No.
Lucas.
Yes.
Tefor.
Absent.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Order of bills. Item two A, resolution authorizing budget amendments for the following items, uh, from the general fund. Uh, the first one is for, uh, meter, street meter repair. It's funding for IPS invoices for printed repair services, modem upgrades, uh, for the village. There's six thousand three hundred eight. The next is, uh, safety building equipment, the fund purchase of office safe. Should be safe buildings department. Okay. The fund purchase of office safe to secure daily building department receipts and other sensitive documents, uh, that's taking seventeen hundred, five hundred fifty-five dollars and putting it to the safe, safety building equipment fund. Central data to fund purchase of projector and screen to be utilized in the main conference room is where I'm now sitting. One, two, three, Mamarone Avenue. Appropriate fund balance, two thousand four hundred twenty. And but that, this is right. So it's going to recreation salaries. Is that right?
Sorry, it, it should be, um, sixteen eighty is, uh, uh, IT.
The number's right. The number's right. The, the description's wrong. Sorry about that.
The IT department.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Uh, fourth street parking to the fourth, the fund four months of utility electric charges for parking lots, lights. Due to unanticipated increase in electrical charges. This is taking five thousand dollars and putting it to the fourth street electric. Those are proposed, uh, budget amendments. I need a motion.
We have discussion.
Yeah, sure.
Jerry, could you give us, uh, some background, uh, in terms of, um, the AV equipment for the, um, boardroom? Is this so that we can continue to have joint Zoom and in-person meetings or is, what is this for?
The projector and the screen for the, uh, for the conference room that, that Tom and Lou are in now. It's to upgrade that equipment. That equipment's antiquated. We have trouble with it all time. So we're upgrading, upgrading the equipment. It's one twenty-three Mamarone Avenue. It's here.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that note, we're going to do something in the courtroom too, right?
Yeah. We have that stuff set up. And then the safe, the safe is a, uh, well, it's, it's part of the changes in the building department. It's part of the changes that we're making to, uh, follow proper procedures in the building department.
Uh, is, is the safe you? Is the safe used, you know, at the beginning of the day, in the end of the day, or during the day?
Uh, it's used, it's used when we're not there. So you take the drawer out. When you get there, you put the drawer back in when you're leaving. But right now, yeah.
Just as a matter of curiosity, I don't mind the money. It's not, not a lot, but we have a huge safe on the second floor.
Yeah, this, this is.
That has plenty of room for documents and a lot of others, and, you know, cash drawers, et cetera.
Yeah, th- this is, this is something, uh, that we need to have, um, with our camera in place, which is in place now. And we need to have it right there in the, in the office.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Sally.
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
And Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh, abstract of manual vouchers is the first. Do we have manual, yeah, we get, right?
Yeah, a small amount.
Abstract manual vouchers. What's the amount? I don't have the.
Twenty-four hundred dollars for postage.
Twenty-four hundred dollars for postage. Uh, anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
All right, uh, but here is, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sally, please.
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Uh, next up is the man, the, the ordered vouchers. And tonight's grand total is six hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars, sixty-six cents. Any questions or concerns?
Oh. Pretty small.
A little bit. And?
Page two.
All right.
Down to the bottom, uh, the third, the third from the, uh, bottom, uh, the one time to, uh, Benita West LLC. This is, um, I, I'm not quite sure. Are we selling this? We?
I'll, I'll explain it. Dan will explain it because he had to explain it to me.
Those are lean payoffs, Dan.
So, so they didn't pay their taxes and you're, you're selling it off? Is that, is that what that is or what?
That's the tax lien that we already sold that somebody came in and said, went to pay off. So we have to pay off Benita West and they can pay at the window.
Okay. And on page five, we, uh, in seven, there are two entries, uh, to the auditors. One is for twelve thousand and one for thirty, uh, thirty-one thousand. It's the same explanation. That's, I, is it just two, for two different aspects of it or?
One, one is for the audit for the court and the other is the village wide order. The audit for the, it gets paid out of uh, eleven-ten. The audit for the village wide audit is, uh, paid out of thirteen-twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Prestise Young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next up is uh new business. Resolution A, authorizing, vacacious proposal for C M O M updates and additional phase one repairs. Uh, this is to investigate deficiencies in our sanitary sewer system. Jerry, would you like to add anything?
Uh, Mayor, this is a plan required um with our um, same to sound situation where um. Uh, we provide a document of our capacity, how we manage it, our operations and our maintenance of our system. And so uh, it's extensive, it's extensive because we're involved with uh the Save the Sound lawyers. So uh, it runs into a, a, a few dollars to get the uh. To get the work done that they require uh to be in the plan. So, and then after this point, the plan will come to the board. For the board to review, so that it's finalized at our, our board level and then provided to uh, to uh, the Save the Sound.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or concerns? Trusting actions.
Jerry, on uh the capacity study, is that broken down by area or is it for the, to the total capacity or?
Yeah, no, it's, it's not broken down by area, it's a general um.
Maintenance, operation and management program.
Yeah, it provides what, it provides um, what, it's really a more of a maintenance plan than anything else. It's not, it's not broken down by areas. Uh, there may be on the maps, but that's it.
Okay, but it's not really a capacity study then?
No, it's not a study at all, it's a plan. It's all, it's just a plan for how we're going to operate and manage our sewer system. That's really what it is.
C M O.
C M O.
Capacity management, operation and maintenance. Okay, uh, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Sally, please.
Custis Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, four B, resolution authorizing tax search area settlement with two nine, two twenty nine Union Avenue. Uh, for three eleven East Boston Post Road. Uh, we discussed this in executive session. With the attorney who's handling this, uh, Mr. Stout, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Any questions or concerns?
Just a question in the uh anticipated budget, has the um, sororities been uh, these and others that we know that are coming down the pike? Have they been uh, given calculations of uh, for the total revenue?
Yeah, we're still good on, on what we anticipate is gonna come in. Uh, and we're usually very good with the amount that we add to the budget. We never exceeded, or s, and to my knowledge, while I'm here, we haven't exceeded that amount that we added to the budget in previous years. Including our current.
I was thinking going the other way, that, that this would decrease the amount that comes in and step and factor in, that was what I was.
Um, I think, I think what you're seeing is some larger, some larger maybe cases being settled. Uh, because it took longer. Um, but at some point, we have to be close, right, Dan and Augie? We gotta be close to the end here.
No, absolutely, and you know, this is part and parcel of uh, you're moving to full value. As opposed to the, right, or you know, it's a. This is dealing with, with assessment from when we were assessing you, you see it's twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. So, you know, I think we are seeing, again, more stability, uh, because you have more frequent uh revaluation.
And, and what, what this reflects is when the village of Mamaroneck had its own assesses department. That, that's why we're dealing with this tonight. Uh, now our assessing is formed out to the town of Ry. And to the town of Mamaroneck. For years, we had a gentleman here uh of sainted memory, Mr. Bud Wright. Uh, who did an amazing job as the village assessor. But when Mr. Wright uh retired. We uh gave the operation to both the town of Mamaroneck and the town of Ry.
Not sure, Mayor, how many are left, but there, there aren't too many left, but we're not.
Mr. Tippett has his hand up.
Glenn knows.
Yeah, actually, um, actually, this should be the last one that um. We represent ourselves. I think this is the uh, the last case that's uh pre two thousand fifteen. At least on the town of Ry side, I think we're pretty much done Mamaroneck side. Uh, a couple of questions. Number one, how much is the settlement for? How much is the village? Uh, how much is the library and how much is the school? What, what's the breakdown of uh, of what it is?
We, we don't do the school here, you'll never see a school number here.
Well, that you will, this would be the last school number you uh do, because that we used to collect for the school back then.
No, we. The, the village of Mamaroneck has never collected for schools. Uh, schools are collected in Westchester County by town and city governments. Village governments never collect.
But, but what is the, what is our refund for the um? How much are we uh refunding for the village and the library on, on these three years?
It's in the third where as clause eighty two.
Third, where as clause eighty two thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay, and uh, we also have the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty one coming from the town of Ry. Have we got that one yet? Town of Ry already approved it for, for the uh, the same. Two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty one. Have, have we, have we gotten that paperwork yet from the town of Ry?
No.
Their board's already approved it.
But three eleven East Boston Post Road? No, I don't, I don't think so. No, I don't think we have that.
Yeah, both, both were settled at the same time. It was, it's directors and basically they were, they were, they were going after uh. They've been battling for ten years, so you do have that one coming in and you probably got about twenty coming in on the uh. On the uh, town of Mamaroneck side, most of them dated uh, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. They're working their way, that, those are active court cases, they're working their way through, you'll see them in the next two months. Thank you.
This is three eleven East Boston Post Road.
Yeah, but there are additional years, I think that's what Glenn's saying.
We only have three years or some more, okay?
The, these, these are the years when we were assessing it, that's why we're dealing with this.
Yeah, but I don't have what he's asking for, I don't have that communication yet.
That, that, we, we are really only voting here on issues that were, you know, pre two thousand fourteen. Or is that when Bud left, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, that's where we got the.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I need a motion?
So moved. Or second.
Uh, Sally call a roll.
Custis Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. And next up is second round of communication award.
We were responsible for the first three years and then um, the town of Ry settled uh two thousand fifteen to two thousand. Twenty one and they voted on it in December.
Thank you.
So, uh, I had uh just a couple of uh, quick questions. Under um, audit of the bills, we have another forty one thousand dollar charge. That would be for the fire truck final charge. Um, is the fire truck also getting some work done over at Excelsior before we actually get it? Or is, is, is the total now finished? That's the new truck we just got.
I, I don't know why a new truck would be an accessory.
We bring it over to Excelsior to put bells and whistles usually when we get new equipment.
They're doing it there at the dealer now. They're doing that at the dealer now.
Oh, okay.
Excelsior has gone the way of the DOTA.
They explain that what Mr. Sarnoff just pointed out.
Yeah, I think uh, Excelsior has gone the way of the DOTA.
Okay.
It's extinct, it's no more, it's the rest of life.
Okay, so we, we got our final, we got our final total in, uh, most of it's already bonded. Uh, it's all bonded, so we're, we're good. Everybody have a wonderful Easter. Uh, COVID numbers, uh, hospitalizations are down again, ICU cases are down again. Just, you know, be a little careful, you got a variant out there, but you know what, start enjoying your lives again. Have a wonderful time and personally, I'm a rabbit ears guy first when it comes to chocolate bunny rabbits. Everybody enjoy, bye bye.
You too.
Good night.
Uh, report from the village manager.
Uh, Mayor, it's late, I don't have a report this evening, thank you.
Thank you for your mercy. Report from the clerk treasurer.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Report from the village attorney.
Thing from me, Mayor.
Uh, minutes commissioned, boards of committees, minutes of board trustees, work session and regular meetings of March fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Minutes of board of architecture review meeting of March first, twenty twenty two. Minutes of planning meeting of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. Minutes of the tree committee meeting of January twenty seventh and February seventeenth, twenty twenty two. All right. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good evening.
Yeah, bye bye.